Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Klock?
Here.
Commissioner Lox?
Here.
Commissioner Hammersley?
Here.
Commissioner Morelli?
Here.
Commissioner Skelis?
Here.
Alternate Kovielo? Alternate Guarino?
Here.
Alternate Sentego?
Here.
Alternate Salvacool? Vice Chairman Chaplinsky?
Here.
Chairman Dosnato?
President, I did hear from Mr. Kovielo and he has alternate plans this evening. And I, Mr. Salvacool's here right here, but all city members are here, so we have a quorum. Could we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Looking for the approval of our regular meeting minutes of October 1st, 2019.
Is that moved?
Motion by Ms. Lox?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hammersley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We do have some public hearings this evening. Rob, did you have something to read into the record?
I do.
Thank you.
Sutherland Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 15th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Municipal Center Assembly Room, 196 North Main Street, Southern Connecticut, for the following applications. A, My Little Rascals, modification of special permit approval to allow for additional children, 805 West Queen Street, property owned by A&amp;K Woodworking LLC in the WSB Zone, that's tabled from October 1st. This next one will be withdrawn by the commission. Special permit application of Joseph Buzewski to construct a 30 by 56 garage, which will bring the total number of garage spaces allowed in excess of three. Property located at 267 North Star Drive in an R40 Zone. That's a continued public hearing from October 1st. Again, to be withdrawn. C, Lovely Development, special permit application for seven lot, open space subdivision property located at 61 Westwood Road, owned by the estate of Barbara Jagoleski, in a B and R40 Zone, continued public hearing from October 1st. D, Lovely Development Resubdivision Application for a seven lot, open space subdivision property located at 61 Westwood Road, owned by the estate of Barbara Jagoleski, in a B and R40 Zone, that's continued from, uh, public hearing from October 1st. E, Sunrise Sutherland LLC, request for zoning text amendment to Section 5-02.2D of the, of the Town of Sutherland zoning regulations. And this is dated at Sutherland, Connecticut, the second day of October 2019.
Thank you very much. In the interest of time, I'm gonna go out of order and do B first. Uh, special permit application of Joseph Bazuski to construct a 30 foot by 56 foot garage, which will bring the total number of garage spaces allowed in excess of three. Property located at 267 North Star Drive in an R40 Zone, SPU 628, continued from October 1st.
And we, yeah, we, we received a request from the applicant to withdraw the application. The commission has to formally accept that.
Okay. Uh, so we do that by vote?
You don't have to do, just the consensus.
That's fine. Has anyone objected withdrawing this application, applications withdrawn? It will not go forward tonight, folks. Anyone here for that application, it will not be heard again. Okay? Uh, tonight, anyway. If they could always reapply if, uh, if he so desires. Okay, thanks. I'm sorry you had to come out, but there's really no other way to do it. We had to do it on the record.
We tried to spread the word as best we could, but...
Alright. Okay. Uh, let's move backwards now to letter A. My Little Rascals, modification of special permit approval to allow for additional children. 805 West Queen Street, property owned by A&amp;K Woodworking LLC in the West Street Business Zone, SPU 570 dot one, tabled from October 1st. Is the applicant here tonight for this application? Interesting.
They did do their notices, so they
Okay.
were able to get it right this time.
Alright. So, um, there's no app, there's no applicant here for this. Let's pass this one. Maybe they're running late? You okay with that?
I mean, you could just, you could, uh, continue the public hearing at this point in time if
Well, I think we should hear from the public if someone's here. Is there anyone here tonight speaking in favor of this app? Wait a second. Hi.
Are, are you here for the, uh, Little Rascals? Okay, it's on the, it's on the, uh, on the docket right now.
You're on the hot seat.
Come on up. That's okay. Two. I'll read it again. My Little Rascals, modification of a special permit approval to allow for additional children. 805 West Queen Street, property owned by A&amp;K Woodworking LLC in the West Street Business Zone, SPU 570 dot one, tabled from October 1st. Hi.
Hi.
Hey, how are ya?
Do you want me to explain, or?
Yes. Step right up to that microphone, just, uh, state your name and address for the record and
Uh, Carlo Russo. And my home address, or the address?
The address of the business is fine.
Oh, 1850 West Street in Sutherland.
Okay.
Um, we're right now, I think our capacity is 81 that we approved the last time we were here, so we're just asking for increase for, to have a total of 113. OEC has come out and already given us our, the approval for the extension. We just need town approval.
So it's an additional 22 students you're asking for? Okay.
81 to 113.
It's actually 80.
It's 40. What did you say, 81 to 1?
I believe it was eight, either 80 or 81 we were approved last time.
Minutes were 80.
31 extra.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
To 113 or 131?
A hun, no.
113.
131, sorry.
Okay. Okay. And the reason is increased business, you have?
So, we, we franchised our location on North Main Street. We kinda brought over our staff from there and decided that my husband and I wanted to be all on their one roof, um, with our business, so we decided to increase it there and sold our business on North Main to someone else. So we just wanted to be in...
And we just opened up a baby daycare. We opened, downstairs is just strictly for babies. So we felt that would be a better situation than having, you know, the older children mixing with the babies, where they're strictly just for, um, younger children.
Okay. So if you wouldn't mind, just state your name and the business. Go ahead.
1850 West Street.
What was the name again?
Uh, it's Chris Russo.
Okay, Chris. Okay. Any questions for the applicants before we hear from the public? Please.
How many existing, how many clients do you have at the North Main Street location that would be transferring over?
You're saying that would?
So, it, North Main is remaining open. We don't know how many families are gonna move over to West Street. We're assuming families that have been with us since babies are gonna wanna stay with the staff, but we have, we don't have an exact number on how many.
The exact, for the downstairs is 31 extra.
No, he's asking how many kids are moving from North Main.
I understand that. I'm just saying, that's what we could fill, we could fill the downstairs with 31. So, I mean, we're hoping that, you know, with the families coming over and, you know, new families that come aboard, be 31 new families.
Okay.
So then for staff, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Rob, how about parking? What is, what's on site now versus what, you know, what the requirement would be?
So my, uh, my comments that went out and I didn't receive a response, um, was, uh, you know, obviously the total number of, of children, which I, I think is 113?
Yes.
31 additional. Uh, and I had questions about, uh, traffic generation because, you know, daycare is almost by definition have a peak hour of trips. Um, I looked through the last, the last meeting, um, there was discussion by the, the applicant's representative about impacted traffic and there wasn't, there wasn't anything, um, it wasn't considered to be significant by the applicant's representative. Uh, we had no traffic stu, study or, not that it was required at the time per se, but we had no traffic analysis or anything of that matter. So with an increase in kids, I'm not sure what that impact is. The play area, I'm not sure if that needs to be increased or not. I think we may have discussed that and maybe had stated that it does not need to be increased.
It does not have to be increased.
Okay, so...
I have a full below parking lot for the, for parking. There's plenty of parking. There's, I wanna say there's 15 spots extra from the downstairs.
Is there a way to get in from the rear? I know that that was a question last time.
There's different spots. There's an up top parking spot, or, uh, to get in, and there's a lower level to get in.
And the art studio's down there, but they don't, their business hours are, yeah, they don't. So we have their spots as well.
Do you know the total number of spaces?
I would guess 15, and then with their spots, another...
Probably another 10 on the other side?
10 on that, and then also there's, there's five. I'd say another close to 15 on their side, too.
Wait, how, how many total of, of the, on the site?
Yeah.
Parking lot's quite large.
Looks like there's 20 spots, Rob.
20?
Additional on the lower one? That's, would be shared with the other business, right? And then?
Yeah.
No, well, we have our own side, and then they have their, they have five spots, but we have our own, there's...
Right, there's 15 spots up high.
No, no.
Is that correct?
Right, there's, that's completely ours, and then the downstairs level, it's split into the parking lot has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5...
I can show you exactly.
Actually, I have it backwards. My apologies. What, West Street has the more parking.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's 20 spots up, up near the West Street and then 15 down below.
Correct.
Yeah, that's right.
I have a question. How's the flow now? Are there issues? I, I remember daycare years, peak times between 6:00 and 7:30, and then again between 4:30 and 6:00, right? Are the pickup and the drop offs for?
Yeah, I mean, our busy times, I'd say probably like, we're, we're closed at 6:00, so our busy times are probably from 5. You know, I, I think our peak would be 5, and then 5:30, the 6 o'clock, it's a very small amount of people that come up that late.
But we've never had an issue with traffic.
No, not at all.
Actually, we got word when we first opened, 'cause we were like, oh my goodness, is it gonna be enough? And we've never had an issue. There's always plenty of spots to come in and come out, so...
Other questions for the applicant? Does that complete your presentation? Oh, sorry, did you have a question, Mr. Hammersley?
How many staff members did you say you had?
We have 30 full time.
Full time, working?
I'm sorry, I, we have 30, uh, full time and part time.
So on any one shift, how many would you have roughly?
Um, during the day, so we will have, we have 12 classrooms and about 20 to 22 staff members.
And most of those people commute via their own personal vehicles?
But the increase is only six more staff members than what we already have.
Okay.
So I feel like if we haven't had an issue up till now to increase it 30 more kids and six more staff members, it's not that significant.
But, but the question's on, on the parking issue.
There's plenty of...
And if you have 30 parking spaces and you have 20 people working at any given time, that's assuming everyone's driving their own car. That's 20 spaces that are taken up.
There's definitely more than 30 spots. I don't know how...
Let him, let him, let him ask the question.
Okay.
Okay, and then you can give your response. Just because she's taking a recording of this, we wanna make sure that we're not stepping on each other.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so, I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, that gives you 10 spots for people that are flowing in and out of there, which see, would seem to make it relatively tight and with kids traversing throughout the parking lot, wherever they might be parking. Um, it, it just is a concern, so I'm sure you see it. I'm just wondering what, how you would reply to that.
No, I totally understand it. I just, I guess, I don't know exactly how many parking spots or how many, I'm being put on the spot. All I know is it hasn't been an issue till now, and our increase is only six more staff members, so I can't imagine it becoming an issue now, and it hasn't been in the past.
So it's six more staff members, but there's 15 spots in the lower level? So we haven't had any issues with the lower to the pot, to the top. The top, obviously, we weren't losing the little level. So now we have 15 more spots, so even if they take the sticks, it's still nine spots extra. And then also, the parents aren't really, I mean, a lot of the parents pull up, they pull to the side, they go get their child, they put them in their car, and then they drive away. So they're not really using per se the parking spots. They're using all the, all the side spots, but if they needed to, they're still, that would, even, even if we said so, 15 minus the six, that's giving us still nine spots for the parents with the increase that they're...
Do you reserve the parking up top for customers?
Correct.
And tell the employees to park down below or farther away from the building?
Let me ask one more question.
Please.
So, not, looking at the, uh, there, is there two lots down below?
There is. There's, there are a lot that goes kinda circled around like that.
So you have three separate lots?
Yeah, I mean, it's, 'cause the Art Center has their set, one, two, I think there's, if I had to guess, it'd say five spots for the art studio.
And the art studio is in the same building as yours?
It's connected, but it's, so it, it's not in the same, well, it's in the same, it's connected, so...
It's the lower level.
Same footprint?
Same, yeah, same building.
Is that the only other business in that building?
That's it.
Rob, for the square footage and the use of those, can you, can you tell us what the requirement for parking is? For the site?
I'm looking through the regulations and there's, there isn't a, uh, an applicable section as far as, for, for daycares. You know, the question about the largest number of employees in one shift is important, 'cause those are, those are vehicles parked. Uh, I think the, you know, again, the, the traffic generation during drop off time in the morning particularly is something I think is, should be a little bit of a concern as well, too, because, you know, we have a number of spaces already taken and you have, I don't know how many trips being generated within that morning rush.
Just for the record, just, uh, because I might have misspoke earlier. It's 20 spots, uh, on the east side of the parcel, closest to West Street. Then there's nine spots closest to, uh, West Queen. And then interior to that, to the south, there's another 15 spots.
Yeah, there's a lot.
So there's 44 in total.
I just pulled up the camera and there's a ton of parking. And then if you see like the, the location here, I mean, this is all free space here, free space there. So like I said, a lot of the parents are pulling up and, you know, they're parking it right from the, all of the free spots here and up there.
Well, I, I wouldn't, uh, you might have to, you might have to give us your phone for the record. No, I mean, we keep it.
We have...
Rob, I could pull the, the map up from the Google Drive up there, right? Can we, can you access the drive right there? I know, just to show it for the record is...
Because if we're counting it, you're counting what, 22 down there?
Yeah, there's way more spots than I thought. There's 1, 2, 3, 4...
You're looking at the map.
Am I counting handicap?
Yeah, I'm looking at the map.
We all have that in front of us. We have the map that we can pull up and count the spaces.
Handicap spots count?
Yes, I counted the handicap spots. It's 44.
44 spaces.
7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24. There's 24 spots.
24 in which location?
The lower level?
That's the lower level, 24.
Oh, shoot, it's 1850 West Street, but I don't know if it comes up, that's 805.
Thank you, mister.
805 West Queen Street. There's two, it's 'cause it's on the corner.
24 and 20, right?
805 West Queen.
44. Basically, it's, it would be 24 spots, we're combining, you know, on top.
Mr. Hammersley, you had another question?
Yeah.
While he's go-
I was just gonna, gonna note that, you know, I mean, some of those spots are handicap spots, and those are spots that people can't park into, so for all intent and purposes, they're kind of unusable.
Well, I, that's why I asked you. I said, how many, is the handicap allowed? You said yes. But if it's not allowed, there's three handicaps, so it'd be 21 spots open.
Yeah, three down low and one up top. There's four handicap in total.
One, I see three, but...
There's only two handicap at the lower level, few more upstairs.
I do have a question, though, mister.
Please, go right ahead.
Have, have you, have you looked into the possibility of expanding or reconfiguring that parking, traffic flow situation?
We haven't. I mean, like I said, the up top part, the parking lot's half the size, and we haven't had any issues with that many kids. We're only looking for 31, and now we're getting double the parking spot from up top. I mean, as you can see, that, that up top is a lot smaller, so the, the down part is double, and we're only asking for 30 more kids. So if we've made it with 81 kids up the top, 31 kids with a double parking lot, I don't know how it would be an issue.
Um, and our landlord also suggested that he could put gravel on the grass if it ever was an issue for staff to park on there.
On, on the, on the left hand side, or that, I mean, that's the west end?
So, right where the handicaps, uh, spots are at the lower level, right in front, it's all grass, so he suggested that we could do gravel, but I can't imagine him even having to do that, 'cause it has not been an issue, and I cannot imagine it being an issue.
Can you do me a favor on that, on that picture right there? Can you point out where your entrance is?
Yeah, so...
She's got a pointer in her hand.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. We got technology, dude.
So the entrance is right there. Of the building?
Yeah. The entrance to, the entrance to your, where do people go when they park their cars? Where do they go into the building?
Uh, the up top one, this is the up top part right here. So they go into this way, now for the lower part, they come in here. And this is the all parking lot.
Okay. Okay. I, I think she actually understood my question better.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just wondering what the entrance is into the building. Where is it?
One's here, and then there's one here, and then one here.
And those are both accessible for people who are coming in to, to drop their kid off or pick their kid off?
Do you use all of them today?
Yes.
So you have three access points that you currently use today?
Correct.
Okay. And your, your staff parks where? Can you show us on there?
So, most of, when we didn't have the lower level open, we were having them park down here to have that all open for parents, but, and they still, they usually park down here, like these last six spots. Um, and then on this side, 'cause the art studio was closed, so they will take that, and usually the up top is, um, empty, but we're kind of splitting it up now because we're downstairs. So they'll park here, here, and these spots over here. So all, this is open for parents, this is open for parents, and this is open for parents.
I guess what I'm saying is, you know, as you can see, this parking lot is a lot smaller, and we're making it fine with 81 kids with just this little parking lot here. We now have this, 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 for only 31 more kids. I mean, it's literally double what we have now, and we're not going in double in amount of children. We're looking for 31 opposed, you know, if it was 80, then I'd say, okay, well, it could be an issue. But, you know, you're talking about 31 kids for double the parking lot.
And on that side entrance, it's not parking spots, but if somebody needed to park, 'cause I think the art studio actually parks, um, let me show. They, the owner of the art studio usually parks over here. There's two spots there, too. It's not technically a spot, but that's usually where she parks her car, whether there's spots or not spots, I don't, she just leaves her car there.
Okay. Other, other questions? Ms. Klock?
Um, I'm not concerned about parking. I'm, I'm curious if there's ever a queuing issue, 'cause isn't there a light at the top right corner of this?
Yeah.
And it's pouring out into, onto West Street? So I'm curious, do you ever have cars queuing up, and then, I'm thinking about, when I drop my son up, there's just kind of cars just coming in at a constant rate? Do you ever see any queuing?
No.
Yeah, I haven't seen, I mean, there's definitely, obviously, there's a four-way intersection, so I mean, there's definitely traffic there, but I mean, we've never had people having issues coming up or, or turning.
There's never been more cars past this. I think that's the most cars I've ever seen stopped at that light at one time. I've never, I've never seen it go all the way down here. It's usually around here at the busiest hour, and that's probably three or four cars.
Okay.
Other questions? Mr. Sentego?
Just to, to piggyback on Jen. So during the high peak hours, when people are coming at the same time, the parking lot situation where people are coming in one way or the other, it sounds like different folks are coming in two different egresses. So because of that, do you have queuing in your parking lot, creating an unsafe condition, let alone on West Street? So during that, are people like, 'cause that seems kinda tight?
Okay.
Parking lot wise?
Okay.
And so if people come in and out, do you ever have that, that situation?
I haven't seen, we haven't seen any issues. I mean, we've, you know, again, we've been there, what, is it two years now?
Three.
Close to three years, and we haven't had any issues. You know, is there traffic sometimes? Yeah, there definitely is. I mean, there's definitely, you know, there's other businesses, obviously, that are there, uh, but we haven't had any issues, no.
Now, and is the parking lot full during the day?
No.
So you don't have cars
We probably...
queuing up those, those spots during the day?
I would say we're, we're probably using...
These spots right here, if you drive by, maybe one or two on this side, and then a couple down here.
But as a rule, that parking lot remains relatively empty?
Yes, we have to leave, we won't let the staff use any of these ones at all. And then usually, um, the first couple here, um, the morning staff, like the ones that were opening up, we allowed to park up top. Um, at one time, it was just the morning people. Now it's, you know, we're letting a couple other teachers, depending on the, the time. But no, there's always, it's open here, um, and then usually one, these ones to here. At least open.
Okay.
And we've never had any complaints from parents either. I would think if they had an issue with parking or the traffic, I think we would've heard it by now, and we've never received an email.
Do you think you need arrows, go this way, go that way, on the pavement?
I don't think so, but I mean, if you wanted, I'd be more than happy to...
Just wondering in regards to, 'cause you have increase of people.
Sure. I mean, if you felt that way, I'd be more than happy to do that.
You know what I mean? So if there's any direction as far as where I'm supposed to go, or if you don't see it as an issue, that'd be the only thing. Just kinda piggybacking on what Jen said, to have, e, since you have more people
Yeah.
and a input-output issue at particular times, if it's easier to just say, follow this line or follow that one.
Only thing is, is that, I, I hear what you're saying. If you need it, I'd be more than happy to put it.
No, just, I'm asking if you think it's needed.
I don't think so, just because, again, you know, they're not coming down to here, so they have to actually leave this to go that way, so I mean, it's not, you know, there's no
Yeah, yeah.
combination where they could go up one way or the other, they have to go this way.
Okay.
But, I mean, again, if it was something that you felt we needed, we'd be more than happy to put it.
Other questions? Okay, thanks, guys. Have a seat. Is there anyone here tonight speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here tonight speaking in favor? Hearing none? Is there anyone here tonight speaking against this application? Okay, hearing none. Rob, what are your thoughts on this? Are you concerned about traffic? Are you concerned about queuing? You know, to, to Peter's point, I think parents are gonna take the path of least resistance. I'm with Jen. I mean, parents get in, they get out, pick up their kids, they go.
Service, right. Yeah, I'm just, you know, some of it's anecdotal, because I, I remember going to these facilities, and I know in the mornings it could be a little nutty. Um, but, uh, you know, again, we don't have, uh, parking requirements that are speci, you know, explicit to this use. We could try to find something that's close or similar, but, you know, with 40 something spaces, it's probably enough. It's just the, you know, the, the traffic pattern, uh...
Right.
You know, it's up to the commission whether you wanna have more information or not, 'cause we, we really don't have...
The, the only, I think the silver lining here is that, um, you know, that's the Apollo Drive, that the butts is, is not heavily used. You know, there's a couple of factories down there and
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Superior, so it's not a heavily traveled road. So, um, I don't, I don't think we need to keep this public hearing open. Is anyone object to us closing the public hearing tonight? Okay, let's go ahead and close the public hearing, move right into letter C. Lovely Development, special permit application for a seven lot, open space subdivision, property located at 61 Westwood Road, owned by the estate of Barbara Jagielski, in a B and R 40 Zone, SPU 627, continued from October 1st. Mr. Judas, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commission members. For the record, my name is Stephen Judas with the office of Harry Colson at 876 South Main Street in Plansville. Get this up.
There'll be a vote on it in a little bit. Well, yeah, the application will, will come to the regular meeting. Yep. I, I mean to say, there may be a vote on it tonight, depending on what the commission thinks. Okay?
Okay. Good evening again, as, as, uh, this application, uh, has been before the commission. We're, uh, I combined the, uh, the resubdivision public hearing in with the, uh, open space public hearing with our previ, my previous, uh, presentation, so hopefully I can continue along that line.
Please.
Um, as, as we talked about the last meeting, this is a seven lot, open space subdivision, um, on a property owned by Barbara Jagowski on Westwood Road in Sutherland. The property, uh, is butted by Westwood. It's open space, town-owned, uh, deeded by Westwood Subdivision. Some residential homes, land of ESPN, prayer house for all graces, and then Dollar General is in this location here. is in this location here. There's a Connecticut Light and Power Resonant that runs through the property here, and that easement also tees off and runs in this direction. We do have one home that abuts the subdivision. The homes in this area are kind of further to the, to the north. The acres of this parcel is eight-point-one-eight acres. It's in our forty zone. We do have a small box of our business zone at this location that we talked about at the previous hearing. Our proposal's for seven lots with a permanent cul-de-sac, and we're proposing two-point-five-eight acres of open-space dedication. We have sanitary sewers that we're extending from West, uh, West Street, all the way up Westwood Drive to this location, and then into, into the property to service each home. And the houses would be serviced by private onsite wells. One of the other questions that was raised at the last meeting was regarding the, the regulations and the suitability. I did submit a quick statement with well completion reports for the abutting properties. We've had, there's been very sufficient water supply in, in the area, so we don't anticipate any issues with, with wells. We did receive staff comments, we made revisions to the plans. I believe we're in pretty good shape from a, from a staff perspective, and I'm trying to think if there are any other questions that were left unopened at the last hearing, but I think, I think that those are the items that I brought up tonight.
Any questions for the applicant and/or its agents? Rob, is there anything outstanding before we hear from the public?
Uh, just the, the commission, so Section three-dash-oh-seven-point-four-A-one states that no more than twenty-five percent of the lots in a subdivision, subdivision shall be served by the, by a permanent cul-de-sac. The applicant, by way of, of an open-space layout, the most optimal layout, which also includes the least amount of roadway that would eventually be town infrastructure, has forty-three percent of the lots, it's basically three of the seven. So technically, the regulations call for the commission to make a judgment and a waiver vote on that as well, so that'd be a two-thirds waiver.
I think I did mention that at the previous hearing, that respectfully requesting that waiver. We could extend the cul-de-sac further into this building lot and push this house further back. It, you know, would reduce the amount of open space that we would deed off, and it would increase the amount of pavement and infrastructure, which I think the whole intent of the open-space subdivision regulation is to reduce pavement, increase open space, so we think that waiver would, is a reasonable request.
That would be a separate vote because of the three of cul-de-sac.
Yeah, correct. And then also, we have a couple of stipulations that we would suggest if you get to that point.
We can get to that. Anything, oh, sorry, go ahead, Steve.
I was just gonna say, I believe the intent of the regulation is to reduce the amount of curb cuts on a cul-de-sac, mostly for plumbing purposes. Generally, we, you know, they need areas to pile snow, so if you have a ton of driveways on a cul-de-sac, there's no place to push the snow. So if you look, we combine these driveways as close as we could, we have a nice area of, in this location, this location, this location, so we do have some open areas around the cul-de-sac for snow piling and things like that. So it's, I believe that's the intent of the regulation, staff could correct me if I'm wrong.
That's what our understanding is as well.
So we tried to, we tried to still accommodate that, that need with this layout.
Okay. Questions for the applicant before we hear from the public? Okay. Have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here tonight speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here tonight speaking in favor? Is there anyone here tonight speaking against this application? Anyone here tonight speaking against? Okay. Let's go ahead and close this public hearing, move right into the next one. Lovely Development Re-Subdivision Application.
Did you have, is that basically one hearing for both of those applications?
Well, I didn't say that, so unfortunately, we'll have to go through the show.
I'd like to incorporate my testimony from the first public hearing into the second public hearing.
Okay, yeah.
But I also would just like to ask if the commission members have any additional questions for me before you, you decided to close this portion.
Well, I thought there'd be more if more people came up to speak before or against. If anyone, I'm not going to hold anyone back, if anyone has a question, by all means.
Okay, I just wanted to...
Okay, so we can close C, move on to D, so don't go far. Lovely Development Re-Subdivision Application for a seven-lot, open-space subdivision, property located at sixty-one Westwood Road, owned by the estate of Barbara Jagielski in a BNR forty zone, S thirteen-twenty-five, continued from ten-one. Steve, you said that everything said in the prior public hearing pertains to this.
Due to the fact that we had subdivided property off previously, business uses for the prayer house and, and ESPN, and the house for Barbara Jagielski required this application to become a re-subdivision. More than three lots requires a subdivision, and we, and that's the reason that we have this, this portion. But everything that I used, all my testimony, testimony in the previous public hearing, I would ask to be incorporated into this public hearing. If you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here tonight speaking in favor of this application? Anyone speaking in favor? Hearing none, is there anyone speaking against this application? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and close this public hearing, move right into letter E. Sunrise Southington LLC, request for a zoning text amendment of Section five-dash-oh-two-dot-two-D of the Town of Southington zoning regs, ZA six-oh-two. Good evening, Mr. Bovino.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission Members. My name is Sev Bovino, planner with Craster-Jones &amp; Associates, representing the applicant, Sunrise Southington LLC. The business model for gas stations slash convenience stores nowadays has changed dramatically, where for them to be sustainable, they have to provide more in a different way with larger facilities. So basically, build a new facility and more updated facilities to serve the current client's demand. In an existing industrial two-zone, I-two-zone, the kind of work needed for the facility is not possible because of setbacks, land area requirements, and not being allowed at all in some cases, because in this zone, the gas stations are non-conforming. Gas stations are not allowed in I-two-zone. So you have some stations that are existing, and so the request for the text change is to address the needs of the existing gas stations, that they need to expand to serve their client base. Therefore, we are proposing a text change to Section five-dash-oh-two-point-two. The request is to add paragraph D on, on the section, which would allow drive-throughs and expansion to an existing non-conforming station within fifteen-hundred feet of exit ramps of an interchange. And this would be done by special permit use, in addition to your regular site plan, which would have to meet the Section nine of the regulations. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions for the applicant? No questions. So just to, in addition to what you're, not in addition, but to reconsider what you're saying, is that even if this is passed, each time this were to occur, they would still have to come for a special permit?
Special permit, notify people within five-hundred feet.
That's right.
Have a public hearing, meet the standards of Section eight, and then actually have a site plan meeting standard of Section nine.
Okay. Questions? Okay, does that complete your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone here tonight speaking in favor of this application? Anyone speaking in favor? Hearing none, is there anyone speaking against this application? Come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Peter Anderson, eleven-seventy-seven Marion Avenue in Marion, Connecticut. And first, let me make it be clear, I'm not speaking against the applicant's desire to change their individual circumstance.
Okay.
What I am questioning is, is this the right way to change the zoning regulations to allow that to happen? And the reason I ask that is because I've searched the current zoning regulations for drive-in, drive-through, THRU, drive-through, THRUGH. I see no definition of drive-through. I do see some places where it's allowed, such as a banking institution in certain cases, many places where it's not allowed. So my thinking is that it would be better to look at the regulations, define drive-through, and then consider where is the best place to allow it. Rather than this, this particular amendment seems to be very specific to an individual circumstance that I'm not sure applies to the whole town and should be put into the regulations that way. But again, I have no objection to the applicant trying to do what they're, they want to do in their particular.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, can you give your address one more time, please? I got, I missed the number.
Sure. Eleven-seventy-seven Marion.
Eleven-seventy-seven Marion. Thanks. Rob, can you speak to Mr. Anderson's question?
What was the specific question?
The definition of a drive-through. He's looking, he's looking through our regs. Do we have a specific definition? I mean, I think we all know in our minds what a drive-through is, but...
Yeah, I think...
Seen them on everything from...
Pretty conventional. I mean, we don't have a definition...
Blue shots to...
We don't have a definition for everything that's in our regulations, so...
Drive-through to, uh, dry cleaning, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it's...
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Questions? No? Go. Okay, is there anyone else speaking against this application? Anyone here speaking against? Okay, Mr. Bovino, do you want to come back up and, I don't know if you have anything to add to Mr. Anderson's question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Drive-throughs are allowed in a B-zone, so we already allow those in a B-zone. And this request for a text change is not just to allow the drive-through, it's not specifically for a drive-through. It's one of the components of allowing a gas station in that zone to expand, and, you know, create a bigger building to serve better the clientele that they have, and possibly one of the components would be a drive-through, if it works for them. So it's not just for the drive-through. This request is to allow the expansion of the, the gas station slash convenience store, which means you're going to knock down the pumps that exist, rearrange them, make them modern, expand the building, create the, more services for, for the facility.
Okay. Mr. Chaplinski, I believe, has a question.
Yeah, so the specificity, it is pretty, it is pretty specific, right? We're talking about creating a regulation for non-conforming gas stations and convenience stores. What's the typical non-conformance that we run into for these type of places?
In a non-conforming situation, you cannot expand more than twenty-five percent of your footprint.
That's the current regulation. That's the current regulation.
Current regulation.
Is that specific only to these type of businesses?
No, any, any non-conforming use. I think maybe what you were asking was, you know, what, what makes gas stations typically non-conforming? It's either the zone they're in, because it's been there before the zone changed, or in some cases, the pump islands are too close to the roadway, because they're, usually a gas station's at a busy intersection, sometimes they're shoehorned in, and they've been there so long that it predates regulations or even zoning in those areas, so that's usually what it is.
And the land area in the I-two-zone is eighty thousand square feet, so you need two acres of land, really, that comply.
And typically, the expansion of a non-conforming use is generally not something that we do?
Uh, yeah, I mean, in the land use arena, you know, there's a thing called illegal expansion of a non-conforming use. In your case, you have a regulation specific to allow for it, to up to a certain extent for, for non-conforming uses, so you're enabling some expansion, whereas if you don't have that at regulation, I've worked for other towns, you can't expand it.
You can't do it, right.
In, any approval or denial of this still means, if it gets approved, if any application comes before, the board will be through a special permit.
Right.
So it'll be a public hearing, and neighbors will be notified if it occurs.
Issues could be addressed at that time, if any.
Sure, of course. Questions? Mr. Greeno?
I was just wondering, do any gas stations slash convenience stores in town have a drive-through now? Are we inventing something new?
Well, I would imagine, I'm thinking of one, I'm just thinking of the, the, I don't know if it's mobile, the gas station on Queen Street across from Spring Street, they have a car wash in the back.
Yeah.
Is that a drive-through?
No, because I don't think they're buying anything besides getting their car cleaned.
Well, that's, they're buying...
I mean, if you have a gas station and convenience store, there's no car wash, you know, what are, what are you driving?
Well, you're paying for a service to get your car cleaned.
Yeah, but that...
You know, and I remember the mobile station across from Wendy's used to have a car wash too. That's the only thing I can think of when I think of gas stations.
The Shell Station down the street has a car wash now. But this drive-through will be to serve sandwiches, that kind of thing, coffee, it's a, that's the kind of thing.
Okay.
Yeah, another way to look at this is that, you know, because it's proposed to be limited, you're looking at potentially uses that are going to be destinations for folks getting on and off the highway, maybe spending a couple extra dollars in Southington, but, you know, it's, but certainly you want to be concerned about what impact this might be in other locations. But again, this is an industrial zone, there's not a, I think the area of Southington has industrial within an interchange area is right in this area. I don't think there's any others.
And you could reduce that distance if you wish.
By the road, by the highway in West Street?
Yeah, but aren't, that's all developed right now, right?
Yeah, today it is.
Other questions?
The mobile there is in that industrial zone.
Yeah, that one, okay.
Okay, here are no other questions, let's go ahead and close this public hearing. Let's move right into our business meeting for tonight. My Little Rascals, modification of special permit approval to allow for additional children, eight-oh-five West Queen Street, property owned by A&amp;K Woodwork &amp; LLC, in the West Street Business Zone, SPU five-seventy-dot-one. This is a table from October one. We heard these guys tonight through a public hearing, we heard lots of information about parking and egress and ingress. Questions? Rob, anything to add?
No, everything that I had concerns over, I, I shared already.
Okay. What's the commission's pleasure?
I, I make a motion to approve, and I have some comments.
Okay.
I, I was on the board when they came for their first application, and, excuse me, and my big concern was the safety of the kids outside, and I was the one that was pushing for the guard rail to be put in. I happen to work on West Queen Street, and I travel that area quite often, and I can tell you that the parking lot is generally empty. So from, from my observations, and I go through there all different times of the day to go pick up things and run errands, I think it's a great, a great business, and I think that it's nice that they want to expand, and so I'm in favor of the expansion.
Okay.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Morelli, a second by Mr. Chaplinski. Any further discussion?
Just to be clear, this is up to one-hundred-and-thirteen children.
No. Hundred-and-thirteen?
Hundred-and-thirteen. Hundred and...
Oh, I thought you said, I thought you said two-hundred-and-thirteen. I'm like, listen, I got to take my shoes and socks off to start counting these kids. An additional thirty-one. I thought you said two-hundred-and-thirteen.
You still have visa next time over there, what are you doing?
I, geez, you know my line, I graduated, not with honors, so... Okay, so we have a motion and a second, no further discussion, please call the roll for approval.
Clock?
Yes.
Locks?
Yes.
Hammersley?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Scalise?
Yes.
Chaplinski?
Yes.
Del Santo?
Yes, motion carries seven-zero. Good luck, guys.
Good luck.
B has been withdrawn. Letter C, Lovely Development Special Permit Application for a seven-lot, open-space subdivision, property located at sixty-one Westwood Road, owned by the estate of Barbara Jagielski in a BNR forty zone, SPU six-two-seven, table from ten-one.
Just recall that they're requesting a waiver on the number of lots on a, on permanent cul-de-sac. It's a way, it would be a waiver of Section three-dash-oh-seven-point-four, dash, or dot A, dot I.
Okay, what's the commission's pleasure? It's like a two-parter. We heard this application of the last two public hearings.
Do we need to take them separately, the, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
The waiver first, and then...
The waiver, and then the...
I'll, I'll make a motion for the waiver.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Hammersley, second by Mr. Chaplinski. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Clock?
Yes.
Locks?
Yes.
Hammersley?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Scalise?
Yes.
Chaplinski?
Yes.
Del Santo?
Yes, motion carries seven-zero. Now for the application.
I'll make a motion for the application to be approved.
Second.
We have a couple of stipulations, do we?
I'll remove my second.
Okay, Mr. Hammersley?
Yeah, go ahead if you want.
Well, maybe Dave could read those in.
Yes, the engineering department had three...
Do me a favor, Dave, talk right into that microphone. We don't want to miss a word.
Yes, the engineering department had three stipulations. Approval of final drainage calculations for the redesign of the storm drainage and detention pond, approval of the intersection grading plan showing half-foot contours, and the third item, location of guide rail to be approved by the Director of Public Works after the road has been built and shoulder fine-grated.
So I'll make a motion to approve with the aforementioned three stipulations by the engineering department.
Motion by Mr. Hammersley.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Chaplinski. Any further discussion? Here are no others, please call the roll.
Clock?
Yes.
Locks?
Yes.
Hammersley?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Scalise?
Yes.
Chaplinski?
Yes.
Del Santo?
Yes, motion carries seven-zero. Good luck. Letter E, Sunrise Southington LLC, request for zoning text amendment to Section five-dash-oh-two-dot-two-D of the Town of Southington zoning regs, ZA six-oh-two.
Again, it's ready for action. Commission's discretion on how you receive this proposal.
Okay, we heard a public hearing tonight, and Mr. Anderson had a question, it was a very good question. My take is, this is belt and suspenders. I mean, if this gets approved, nothing happens, they still have to come before this board, there still has to be a public hearing, any conditions could be set.[1632.01] there still has to be a public hearing, any conditions could be set. That's my rub, but who am I?
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
To Rob, is there another avenue to make this happen?
Uh, yeah, they would have to seek variances, in some cases it may be difficult to, to, you know, basically describe their legal hardship.
Okay.
Rob, is this in your tenure, is this, this has not come up in my tenure, so I guess the question's moot.
What's that?
Of this coming up in the past, adding a drive-through to-
Drive-throughs for, yeah, not the first time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm. Mr. Hammersley?
So, so, my comment is, you know, I've seen these in other towns, right, I've seen the Dunkin' Donuts drive-throughs at gas stations down south, they're quite prevalent, and, you know, the words of Christa Clark ring in my ears from, from last meeting where she talked about what do we want our town to look like? And I'm not so, maybe not so concerned about, about that one spot, but do we want that to become something that happens in other spots? I mean, Paul raised one about the one out on West Street, I think it's a mobile station out there that could potentially be the same thing, and it's just, it's just something I'm kind of conflicted in my mind about, is, is this the right thing to do that way? Or is it, you know, to Jen's question, is it, is it better to have it done the way that it would be done now without this regulation being passed? And, you know, again, it's just a concern, I'm not, I'm not saying in favor or against, but I'm just, I'm just uncertain really.
So I guess the question becomes, would it be okay in some areas and not okay in other areas? So that's, you know, once again to reiterate.
Mr. Chair, it might be good, is it possible to get, I don't think we need to act too quick on this.
Sure, right.
I mean, if it's possible between now and the next meeting, like, what's the potential impact for existing non-conforming, uh, gas stations, convenience stores within fifteen hundred of, within fifteen hundred feet and in industrial zone?
Of interchange, yeah.
Of interchange, I'm thinking another one, end of West Street might be an industrial zone where the mobile is on West Bean.
That's correct.
So, it just might be-
That may be the location of this proposal.
And then there's the, yeah, I mean, of course, there's the new one on Marin Waterway Turnpike, is that a business?
Well-
Business zone, I mean?
You know-
That's a business zone?
Yeah, if it's new, it has to be a business zone, because you can't do it in industrial.
That's right, it would be existing, yeah, so.
So is that a motion to the table?
Like, how many, I'm just wondering how many possible ones of these could there be? I mean, it would imply that there's only, they would have to exist today, right?
Yes.
So, if it, I can only think of a couple.
It may in fact only be two. But, you know, if you want us to double check on that, we certainly can do an analysis.
Yep.
I think that would help me anyways, speaking for myself, I, you know, it's the uncertainty of, of what this really means in the end, if it gets adopted, I'm just not sure what it is. You know, I think there's a couple of spots that we've talked about, but is there something out there that we're-
Well, you know, if, if you guys feel strongly about it, then-
If there's only a couple of spots-
Have staff do an analysis and-
I don't think it's going to have, at least without really studying it, it might not have a huge impact, but it would certainly be worth putting on the record and understanding it. And, you know, I'd like to respect also Mr. Anderson's comment about the definition of drive-through. It might give us a couple of weeks to look at what is a drive-through, and should we beef up other regulations in, in concert with this as well? I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, it could be a two-step process, address this and then address drive-through once we have the information, so. But I think more information would help us.
So.
I would agree.
Okay. I'll make a motion to table.
We have a motion by Mr. Chaplinsky to table, second by Mr. Hammersley, oh.
The only thing I'll add, though, is I want to make sure that, you know, because we did close the hearing, so technically we can't receive extra evidence, but if you're asking me for hard facts-
We want you to get an analysis.
That I can return to you. Exactly, let's make sure we're, we're clear about that.
Road trip to the Waffle House in South Carolina.
I mean, I can give you the total number of, yeah, exactly.
What are the total number of numbers?
I don't know if, I don't know if we want to get into definitions of, of it right now, because I think you're adding-
Well, I think we all know in our mind what a drive-through is. I get it.
It's not a car wash.
Or is it?
Or a car.
Well, do you drive your car through the car wash?
I drive my car through the driveway, too.
Getting deep, getting deep here.
We're having a discussion now.
Can't get a sandwich.
Okay, so we have a motion to table and a second, Leno, you got those two right? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion table carries seven zero, we'll take this up at our next meeting, some of us will, anyway. F, Mary Ann Hall and Stephen Barbarino, site plan modification application for proposed addition to existing building in cold storage building in the rare property 480 Queen Street in a B zones, SPR 1593 dot one. Mr. Pavino? Oh, that's a shame. Chill Bob. Oh, he's watching. I'm logged out here.
How about Peter?
You don't have to rush home and watch the Yankee game, it's over.
They're Blues, they're two nothing.
Four one they lost.
Listen, the Sox were down oh and three, remember? Bob, remember that?
No.
I do. I was at that third game.
Number twenty-seven.
I was on the tee, we lost nineteen to six. You ready there, Mr. Versari? We're having our little meeting over here, talking baseball.
Commissioner members, Seb, Boavino, Planner, Crass and Jones.
The Duke.
Represented the applicant, the property is located at 480 Queen Street, the map on the, on the screen here, this is Queen Street. Here's Queen Street, this is an existing building, north is up, the highway is close by. It is in a business zone, it is known as World Wine Liquor Store, served by public water and sewer, a portion of the building, the southeast corner, was used for a drive-through. This area here was used for a drive-through for clients to pick up their orders of liquors and then get out. That idea did not work out.
Originally the car, no, the Jaguar dealer, right?
Yes.
The car was a drive-through.
It was not a drive-through car wash.
Oh, drive-in, yeah.
You picked up your Jaguar, that was before the total lot.
That area is about eight hundred and sixty square feet, it's already existing, it's currently being renovated for a convenience store. To make that area more efficient, we would like to add this small red area here, two hundred ninety-one square feet, to make it more efficient, people will come in, kind of, there's like an area there, then the store will be down in this area here. There's not going to be any mixing of activity between the liquor store and the convenience store. This is basically the proposal in front of you, is the two hundred ninety-one square feet addition and the cold storage building in the back, about twenty by forty, which is eight hundred square feet.
What does that say, Seb? What's a cold storage, like a shed? Or a refrigerated building for-
Cold storage meaning there's no heat, there's no, it's just power to store the pallets, they get pallets, and right now the pallets are stored in this corner.
Okay.
And we don't want that to be continuing.
I got you.
We want to put it in a safe place and they're undercover. So, there is no liquor sales or food preparation proposed for the convenience store. The liquor store takes place in this area, and the convenience store operates by itself there. And it's typical, the material that's sold there, the items sold are your typical convenience store items, like soda, coffee, sandwiches, all kinds of small items that they sell in the convenience store. Let's see, we received staff comments, reflected their concerns on the plans and responded in writing, I hope you've received the comment list that we responded to. The applicant, as you know, has been very active in terms of connecting properties. He, a few years ago, I was in front of you, proposing the connection between this facility and the drugstore to the north, so he had spent quite a bit of money to do that and took a while to get the agreement in place. This traffic from here, if you want to take a left, instead of take a left, you go north to the light and you take a left, otherwise you could take a safely, a right turn movement going south. We understand that a cross easement was offered by the owners of 462 Queen Street to the south, which is the medical building. The applicant is willing to cooperate to do the same, pending his legal consent recommendation on the matter. For the record, section nine dash oh nine point one of the regulation requires a twenty by sixty-foot easement for a common driveway. The regulations that you have in the books now, on the books now, are more for a driveway to reduce the number of curb cuts on Queen Street, they placed a regulation where you offer a twenty by sixty-foot easement, so between property owners eventually would become one curb cut instead of two next to each other, so that is the intent of the regulation. The current request is for a connecting driveway between parcels, from this parcel to the next parcel. So what we did, we took the plans that the town has on record, and we reflected them on our plan, and that's where the curb cut would be, connecting the two parcel. I have a map there I want to show you, so, you know, we put some thought into this, I put it on the- The idea of these connections between businesses is to allow the connection, but there's a safety consideration to keep in mind. Here's the, the signal at the drugstore, and here's our, our property here in the center. If someone right now wants to go north, they'll go through the drugstore to the light, and if they want to go south, they could take a right safely, as I said, from our site. So, nobody will go through the, through the medical facility to go south to, let's say, the Price Chopper. It's the reverse, you'll have people from Price Chopper with this, envisioning that someone from Price Chopper wants to go through the medical building, parking lot, and, you know, navigate that. You have to go north to go to John Wyssell Crossing, which is right here, so here's the Price Chopper, you have to go north, go across the John Wyssell Crossing roadway into the facility, medical facility, and take a right, head north, then right, then straight into our parking lot, then north again. So it's kind of a convoluted traffic situation. I mean, we're willing to do it, but I just have to realize that people from here, they're not going to come here and then, they have to come here and then out, they cannot take a left, they have to still take a right, so they're not going to do it, they're just going to take a right, our driveway. And they're not going to take a right at John Wyssell because there's no light at John Wyssell. There's a light at the highway and a light on Loper Street. So, right there is the signal. So, anyone from Price Chopper that wants to go shopping over here, most likely they go straight to the light, take a left, and then they take a left, there's a dedicated left turn movement in front of our store for traffic patterns. So you come up, you stand in the, in the safe zone here, and you take a left into our facility. So, just so you know, we are willing to do this, but it's not really a big winner, in my opinion. You're just going to go through all those zigzags, and you might create a problem for the medical facility in terms of traffic.
Okay.
With that, I want to leave it up to you to consider it.
Okay, so the site plan modification for us is to add on to the existing building and to build this cold storage building in the back.
Yes.
What's the commission's pleasure on this? Is ready for action, Rob?
Yeah, so the connection obviously is the, it was the big concern that staff had, and then we would have a, one stipulation, I believe, if you chose to have action.
So, Mr. Chair-
Go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion to approve with the stipulation that we make the connection on the interconnectivity, and I'd like to make a quick comment.
Please.
So, I, I understand your, your comment about, you know, the navigation of folks, in my opinion, having, you know, being in adjacent parcels all the time, you know, people who are in Price Chopper parking lot-
It's always at the liquor store.
It's not what I was, I'm saying, I go to Price Chopper, I wouldn't think of leaving Price Chopper and going through the medical office building to the former Rite Aid to go north. I would go to Price Chopper signal, there's a signalization to go left there. So I don't think the, I don't think the, in this case, the intention would be to allow traffic to go, you know, the way that was described there, although there may be a stray car or two that, that does that, admittedly. I personally just think traffic management along Queen Street, it's a good practice to continue to build on these, I think we've done a really good job. And I do think that there are people, there's people who work at the office building, the medical office building, there's people who frequent it, who aren't necessarily getting procedures, Peter, who, who might want to go to the liquor store to buy a gift, for example, before they go home. So I think that there's a benefit to having the connection from the businesses, and in the future, you know, that's, that, that, that can, you have it labeled CVS, for the future-
You know something we don't?
Yeah.
I've not shot Rite.
Rite Aid, Rite Aid.
Rite Aid.
So, I mean, in the future, you know, we don't know, we don't know what these will be twenty years from now, and having these on the land record, I think, is useful, and I personally think it'd be a positive move. And I appreciate, the last application with the medical building, who agreed to put that easement there, I appreciate that, and certainly will appreciate if we can make this happen here.
You have a stipulation from the engineering department?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hold on one second, I just want to clarify, Paul, what your intentions are, Paul, for them to put a reciprocal easement on their side or an actual connection?
Make the curb cut connection, because we have the easement already. The intention of putting the easement-
On the medical side, yeah.
They should make the connection to the medical side, correct.
Yeah, that's what-
They should open it.
Our interpretation of the regs was that the medical office building provided an easement on their side, and then-
Exactly.
In the future, the other side was going to make the connection. However they want to work it out.
That's how we've been doing that, you know, all along, so yes, that's, that's correct, that's my intention.
The thing is that, Mr. Chairman-
Well, hold on, we have a motion, though.
Through you.
Before you, before any discussion, though, there's a motion for approval, but he didn't say the stipulation.
I did.
There was no second yet.
I did say a stipulation for that.
You did, but engineering has a stipulation.
Yeah, engineer, you want to read it?
You want me to remove mine?
No, no, you're, you're okay, there's no second yet, so, David, you can read engineering stipulation.
Yes, can I ask Seb a question?
No, of course you can, yes, please.
Seb, earlier Jim and I were talking about this, and-
Dave, talk right into that microphone, I can barely hear you, thanks.
We noticed that there were pallets with plastic material, but you've indicated that some of those pallets are going to be stored indoors?
All of them.
Okay, all of those are going to be stored indoors? Okay.
We responded to your count.
Yes, yes, I have those, and the trash enclosure that's there now, we noticed a lot of the dumpsters weren't within that. Would it be possible to have the new trash enclosure put on the site plan, because your notes here said that it was-
We have a note indicating that the dumpster would be located within the structure, within the structure.
Okay, the note just said that it was going to be relocated, we weren't sure where. We just would ask that the-
You're okay with those two stipulations, Seb?
No problem.
That the pallets are stored indoors and the dumpster is clearly labeled and marked, enclosed?
Yes, thank you.
Can you add that stipulation to your motion?
I will add staff stipulation in addition to the one that I have already-
So we have a motion for approval with the stipulation that the connection be made for the cross easement, and the aforementioned stipulation set forth by the town engineers' office. Now we're looking for a second, if possible.
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Hammersley, for the discussion.
I'll, I'll just add that that cross easement between this site and the, and the site to the north there is probably the most thought on, on cross easement in the town, so far. I mean, there's potential for other sites, I think, but, but that one is, is very well done because of the location.
Right.
And, you know, in the, in the event where you need to either get on the highway or take that left-hand turn going northbound, I think, on Queen Street is, it's a, it's a great asset that we have.
It's a lifesaver, probably literally.
It might be, yes.
As, can I?
Please, go right ahead.
As is shown on the map, our, the applicant created that connection. He spent his time, he did all that.
You put that stop sign with it.
It was no request.
Well, then, take this as a public thank you to the applicant from me, anyways.
The, I just want to mention to, for the commission, we are losing four or five spaces at that location because of this connection, and those are premium spaces right in this area here, but again, we're here to work with you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I've heard good things, the devil's juice have not touched my lips, I don't go to liquor stores, but. Any further discussion?
Okay.
Okay, Rob, call the roll for approval with the aforementioned stipulations.
Clock?
Not on Tuesdays, anyway.
Locks?
Yes.
Hammersley?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Scalise?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Absolutely.
Del Santo?
Thank you.
Yes, motion carries seven zero, thank you very much, Seb, good luck.
Thank you.
You know, one meeting in the summer months, one meeting, uh, in December.
Yeah, we understand that, um, so I think it's required that we have this into the town clerk by December 1st. We understand there may be some different faces on the commission. But if there's a conflict with a meeting somewhere during, near the holidays next year, we can always cancel a regular meeting.
Okay. So, um, looking for a motion to approve that calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Mr. Hammersley?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chaplinsky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Administrative items, open space and land acquisition report. Paul, anything? Or Mr. Greeno, anything?
Your property was taken. Uh, you know, we have, uh, we had, uh, we had the opening of Novick Orchard, um, Pollinator Garden. So that was great.
Good stuff. Yeah, that was good.
And Mrs. Greeno were instrumental in, um, the, the building, the education, the spreading of the, the, the word, and also the, uh, you know, during the, uh, the event. Maybe you could talk a little bit about the event and how it went off. That was really nice.
Yeah, it went off well. We, we had a few outside people there, and, um, my wife gave a little talk about the pollinator pathway. That's what Paul is referring to, not the garden per se, except it becomes on the pollinator pathway, and we're trying to...
She's a consultant on the garden, though. She gave us some guidance.
Through me, yeah, well, yeah, she did. Through me. She's, she's my source of information. I don't know anything. But the, the idea with this pathway is to have little islands throughout the town where pollinators can get their, get their food and, and, uh, shelter and some, and other, uh, doing native plants, so that's food for insects that birds eat. You know, it just generally helps, 'cause we've been destroying the environment by planting a lot of things that aren't native, and I mean, you could look at, like, plant daffodils, or you see those daylilies that are growing. You'll never see a bee in them. That's 'cause they don't like them, but they look good. And, you know, if you have too much of that stuff, then no food, no bugs.
And Mr. Greeno, uh, before the end of the project was concluded, he succeeded in getting me to eat an olive tree berry.
Autumn olive, autumn olive berry.
So that was good.
Yes, that's how we fight invasors. We eat, eat the seeds. They're delicious.
So it was good, uh...
Wasn't it good? No.
Actually, it was good. I'll, I'll admit. Um, there was also a, a release of a couple butterflies instead of a ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Oh, I forgot about that, sorry.
Which I thought was a nice touch and fitting for the, uh, the event. And the, the field, uh, in Novick's has been, has been mowed, so I think it's, it's looking good now, and we have to maintain that in the next...
Don't wanna diminish the work that Mr. Greeno and Paul put into this. They worked all summer. I know I'd be on the golf course with Paul first thing Saturday morning, and it'd be 100 degrees when we left. And he said, "I'm gonna carry buckets of water." So, and so we thank you very much. Mr. Sobel, did you have something?
Just a clarifying question, or for my own identification. Is there any truth to the rumor that Mr. Chaplinsky has tried to name his street the Pollinator Pathway?
Ah, Pollinator, I get it. All right. Put that on your list for the next one.
Yeah, and, on the topic, though, you know, I do on the...
It's on the topic.
On the topic, no. On the pollinator topic, that's not true. But, uh, I, I would like, there is the development on the other side of town, uh, off of Mount Vernon, where Eddie's Bakery is. I did commit to helping with that one as well.
Mariani Drive.
Can you, can you maybe get an update for us on what the horizon looks like for the development there? On the parcels that are maybe on either side of the open space that was, I think it was three quarters...
Mr. Greeno represented that applicant. Maybe he can help, too. Mr. Mariani, from, uh, Mount Vernon Road? Yeah.
We had, I had committed to helping out with the Pollinator Garden there. Maybe it won't be as formal, and maybe it will be just, uh, uh, you know, plantings and allow it to grow on its own, but I'm happy to help. I committed to helping with that one, and I'm still committed to doing that and helping with any funds to, you know, maybe a plaque there similar to, to spread the word about it. Okay, I'll touch base with you.
I'm gonna go plant the pear tree. Oh, no, no. No, not the invasive, right?
Not the cow.
No.
Only if you put a part...
Thank you, guys, seriously. Jokes aside, good work, hard work.
One other thing, Paul mentioned that we had the field mowed. Well, we're gonna, uh, keep that as another, uh, another meadow, pollinator meadow. We're gonna let it grow, and we're gonna keep mowing it, and, um...
But not all the time, just enough to...
No, just every couple of years, so it doesn't...
Some seeding of appropriate, uh...
Yeah, I did some guerrilla gardening in there a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
Throw some seeds down.
Regional Planning Committee, anything? Mr. Hammersley?
No.
Wow. Those meetings are locked up tight. Here it is, committee update.
I think they've actually gone to quarterly meetings now.
Yeah, probably.
They didn't meet all summer, so...
Yeah, and, and we had one in September. I wasn't able to attend it. They didn't, I think they just made a, you know, a couple of decisions. One was to go to quarterly meeting, so it's, it's probably not gonna be very long.
Okay. Jen, anything for the Heritage Committee update?
Uh, the meetings have been postponed until post-election happenings.
Okay. Items to schedule for public hearing. Looks like we could handle that on the 19th?
We got a couple of things on administrative.
Oh, excuse me. Thought this was America.
The first one, just to get this out of the way, there was a question that was brought up the last meeting about the, uh, stockpiling on DOT property along...
Thank you. Thanks for looking into that.
So, um, you wanna talk about it?
Sure.
Since you had the email.
Go ahead, Dave, yeah. We're making you work tonight.
A couple of years ago, Gary asked me the same thing, so I reached out to someone that I knew at the DOT, and he basically told me that it was material that was being stockpiled for the Mixmaster project, and they didn't have any specific date as to when it would be relocated.
Oh, the Waterbury Mixmasters. That hadn't started, really.
But he also, he wasn't directly involved with this project, but he gave me someone's number if we wanted to pursue it further, who we could reach out to.
When I, when I read the email, it kinda, without, without saying directly, it kinda said, you know, we're, this is what we do. This is our property. This is what we do.
In other words, don't worry about it.
So, uh, it, when you say the Mixmaster, is that a future project, or is that what they did in Waterbury already? Because the Mixmaster, to me, means the bridge that hasn't been touched.
That's the Mixmax, or is it...
I think that it was for both projects. Just all the work they have been doing in Waterbury, and then planned, uh, work that is gonna be done out of Waterbury.
I think, I think we're owed an explanation. I mean, don't you think? I would, I would like to see us contact the state and ask them.
I did speak with them three.
I gotta be honest with you, it's unsightly. It's, it's unsightly.
We, we can always reach out to that, that, uh, contact and see if you can get, get any leverage, but...
It's not, it's not just one, it's multiple, and they look, I mean, they could have at least made them proportional to the areas. They're not even proportional. It, it does look bad. And if there's a plan to remove it, that's great. If there's no plan to remove it and they plan to leave it there indefinitely, I would definitely like to know that, because, you know, I don't think that was the agreement or the commitment they made originally. They originally said it was gonna be stockpiled for, uh, for use, and it would be removed later on. So I, I definitely would like to know more about that.
We'll try to slither into the weeds farther then.
Anything else for administrative reports? Is that with it?
Uh, oh, uh, this goes back to the discussion we had at the last meeting about window signage.
Oh, yes.
I sent all of you, uh, 'cause it was, it was a, uh, request to come up with regulations that are actually in Connecticut, that have window signage definitions and, and requirements, and I sent those out to everybody. I, I, if, I did note that the responses I got were more from the city. I mean, they have more probably of an issue of this, uh, window signage, uh, issues. So I don't know if the commission wants to do anything with this.
Well, it looks like the majority of them don't count the window decals towards the...
At the very least, I think that's a great, where they don't count the decals as towards their signage allotment, and, and...
Well, they have a separate requirement for it.
And then the separate requirement is like 50% of the window should stay open or something like that, you know what I mean?
25 to 50% is a range, yeah.
Definitely something to...
So, I, I'm just looking for direction, if you want me to do something with that. I'm holding off on the, uh, native plants to, like, to package it all together, so we can do one shot out to the regional planning agencies.
Okay.
I think we should draft it up and then put it in front of the commission, and let, let it be debated.
That's, I, I agree with that.
Okay.
Unless anyone else objects to that.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it, Rob?
Uh, yeah, that's it.
Okay, it looks like we can handle that on the 19th. New applications?
Uh, just that on the 19th.
Okay. Anything the commission wants to discuss or bring up?
Could I, uh, could I just do a point of personal privilege? We have a couple of members on, on here tonight that, that, uh, irregardless of how the elections go, in a couple of weeks, will not be back here. Dagmar and, and Jim and, and Jen, um, at the very least. So, as, as a relatively new member of the commission, I, I'd like to thank each of them for the, the breadth of their knowledge and their involvement and their input into different things that I've worked with them on. So, um, I just wanted to take this as an opportunity to thank them publicly, so...
Very nice.
Thank you.
Very nice. Go ahead, Jen.
Yep, I just wanna say something. So, eight years ago, eight and a half years ago, um, I came, we were actually at the town hall space, and I was, came in green, not knowing what I had gotten myself into. And I was not knowing if this was the right position or move for me, and shortly after, I realized that it was just what I needed. I have loved working with my fellow commissioners, town staff, um, developers, engineers, um, everyone involved that makes everything happen in the town. You don't realize how important this position is until you're actually in it, and there's people sitting in the audience, and every vote is an effect on, on their property and their lives, and I've listened to every word, and I have not regretted any vote. And I do it all over again, and I just wanna thank everyone into the newcomers, take advantage of every opportunity, because it's not just sitting here, it's, it's doing and volunteering and getting involved in your community. And it's, it's such an important position to be in, and, and thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you as well. Um, I was appointed to this position. It was very interesting to be a part of the variety of issues that we've seen. I think it's, uh, it's a tremendous opportunity for anybody, um, to come on and, and learn about a lot of these issues, to give back. And I have to say, the last couple of meetings have been bittersweet, thinking, "Oh, maybe I should've done this again." But, um, I, I welcome, you know, having other people come and also have the opportunity to be a part of this, uh, commission. So, thank you.
Mr. Greeno?
Yeah, I, changing the subject, I wanted to thank Rob for putting all that extra information up in, in the Google Drive for us, the responses from the applicants and such, which we never had.
I'd give kudos to Karen Malloy in our office. She's the one driving the bus on that one.
Okay.
I'll pass it along.
Yeah, she's great. Anything else?
Okay, so I just wanna, I guess I can encapsulate and end it up, just, uh, to piggyback on what, what everyone else has said.